Thank you. All right. It's 5:15. We will call the workshop to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Councilmember Wong is gone, and Mayor Mungy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer, second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did I say it wrong again? You got a lot of this one. All right. Topics.
All right, we got two topics up tonight. First one up is the cannabis discussion for cannabis ordinance. Turn it over to Riley Graham, our new development director.
Thank you, Brian, and good evening, councils. So the state legislature recently approved legal adult-use cannabis consumption in the state of Minnesota, and the Office of Cannabis Management is expected to begin issuing licenses in early 2025. Even though the license and registration process of these products is going to be mostly handled by the state, cities will retain a limited role in dictating available locations within each municipality where cannabis sales productions, et cetera, can operate, particularly in land use area. Jack from the city attorney's office was kind enough to send us a memorandum outlining some things that the city should consider when developing a new cannabis ordinance, and that is in your packet this evening. We, being staff, recently met together to review the information and develop some recommendations for the council to consider here this evening. The thought would be, we'll take kind of each one and garner some feedback, and then using that information, the city attorney's office will draft our ordinance, and then that'll go to the planning commission at their December meeting for a required public hearing. And then the final approval will happen here in the city council in December. So with that, I'm gonna just kind of shoot through each of these points and stop at each one, and I'll look for any discussion and some direction. So first and foremost, it is important to note that cities cannot ban or prohibit possession, transportation, or use of cannabis or hemp products. Cities are also not allowed to ban the operation of business licenses under the Cannabis Act. We can only enact reasonable, and I use that kind of as a vague gray term, reasonable restrictions. And cities will need to ensure that we are not effectively banning these operations through local zoning controls. So first and foremost, when we look at zoning, cities are allowed to control the location of cannabis sales through local zoning. And cities may also restrict such use of operations in certain zoning districts and allow them as conditional uses if you want. So when we looked at all of the available zoning in our city, we determined that our recommendation would be to allow for cannabis operations in the MU2, which is the transitional mixed use, and the MU3, which is the corridor mixed use zoning districts. We would like to prohibit those businesses in the MU1, which is the downtown mixed use. Again, this is generally defined as North St. Paul's historic downtown Main Street. And I know Jack mentioned that we would need to make a factual finding. Can you kind of describe what that entails?
Yeah, we just want some idea from the council. This is a legislative decision, so this is where your discretion is at its broadest. But just sort of keeping in mind that, you know, we do want to have some kind of rhyme or reason for why we're acting the way that we are. It doesn't have to be airtight. We don't know exactly how these businesses are going to play out. But we don't want to be just sort of pulling things out of a hat either.
So by restricting cannabis uses to the MU2 and the MU3 zoning districts allows for enough properties within the city where we're not, you know, effectively creating a ban or a prohibition for these businesses. And then also, the staff does recommend requiring a conditional use permit in the MU2 and MU3 zones. Again, just to provide an additional review process. You know, think of it as any other conditional use permit application that would come before the city, planning commission, public hearing, that type of thing, before finally being looked at and approved by the city council. So I'm gonna stop there. Is there any questions on the zoning districts that are being recommended by city staff? Seeing none? Okay.
I guess if I could just say another.
Absolutely.
Jump in here, mayor and council members. I would just note that city attorney's office actually would recommend against conditional use permits. This is not a strong recommendation, and you are certainly welcome to go that way. I'm not saying it's forbidden or anything. I do note that the kinds of conditions that can be imposed on a CUP process are fairly limited and fairly restricted because we are, sort of so broadly speaking, preempted by state law. And so our feeling is that it potentially creates more administrative hassle for the city than it creates meaningful control over these businesses. Again, though, that's kind of our take on this. It's not a legal requirement.
So you're saying not having any zone, like, have you won being able to do that?
No, sorry. So just not a conditional use permit, so it would still be restricted to the MU2 and 3. But it would be a permitted use in those two districts rather than a conditional use.
When you say limited, what scope is that?
I'm not certain I understand. When you say it's limited.
When you say the CUP, you had limited, we have limited ability to?
Yes, so it's a little tricky because a lot of these, a lot of the rules, a lot of the regulations around these businesses are going to come from the Office of Cannabis Management, which has not yet finalized or even gotten especially far in its rulemaking process. We don't have the draft rules from the state yet. That said, we know a lot of things that might be the subject of some kind of conditional use permit are the kinds of things that are going to be included in a state licensing application. So for example, we don't know the contents, but we do know that these businesses will be required to submit a security plan. We don't know exactly the contents, but they will be required to, in their state licensing process, provide for access restriction to make sure that minors aren't able to purchase these products. We don't know exactly how it will work, but they will have to provide for training of staff in, you know, ID checking and those sorts of things. So given all of that, the types of things that we can impose sort of business-specific controls on might be fairly limited to, you know, things like local architectural controls, which I don't think North St. Paul generally goes for anyway.
And I might add, I think the original thinking from a staff level is that, again, there's just so much unknown when it comes to these types of businesses that having an opportunity to step back, work with the city attorney's office to say, okay, does this proposed business meet all of the qualifications and requirements that not only the Office of Cannabis Management is imposing, but also some of those other things that the city can do? And that's just a recommendation from staff. The council does not have to agree with that. That's fine. We don't have to go through a CUP process, but it just, we just thought maybe it might be a good opportunity, at least initially, to sort of give ourselves a little step back and say, okay, is this meeting everything?
And I think that's a totally fair read, and this is not.
We can always, we can always discontinue that process again in the future.
And this is not, staff and the city attorney's office are not having a particular fight about this or anything. It's just two different perspectives. And again, from our perspective, we also worry that, you know, a conditional use permit must be granted if the applicant can show that they have met all of the preset criteria for it. And so because we have so few criteria we can impose, it just sort of ends up being another hurdle for the businesses and another point where the city council has to be involved and then potentially has to, you know, if these businesses end up being unpopular, you know, potentially has to approve because we can't say no, we don't have any real discretion on it, but it sort of forces the council to be involved in the process again.
And one other thing, too, with the requirement of a CUP having a public hearing notice or a public hearing, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we require a conditional use permit process, all of those properties, you know, within, I think it's 350 feet, if I'm not mistaken, would be notified, whereas if we didn't require a CUP process, it's not going to pop up overnight. But essentially, if you're not paying attention to some of the properties around your home, it might show up there, and all of a sudden, you're like, what's going on? How did this show up? So there is that kind of angle as well. It gives a very specific localized area around that property an opportunity to be, just make it known and heard that they're moving in there.
But they really can't do anything about it, though.
Essentially, probably not.
Just a mandate from above.
Sure.
Can I gain some clarity on our zoning map? If I look at this correctly, MU3 along 7th Avenue would start at the corner of 7th and 1st and work its way southwest to McKnight. So that encompasses the MNI Housing, is in the MU3 area, as well as the Anchor Apartments. And what is, what's right here? It's senior living, but I can't think of the name of it.
Polar Ridge.
Yeah. I don't know how granular we need to be, but I don't think that, that's residential in my book. Well, so anybody in the MNI Housing that wants to buy a lot across the street from MNI, where the city owns five lots, we couldn't stop them. And that's right in the middle of a neighborhood.
Provided it's in that zoning district, yeah.
That's why we're having these conversations.
Right. That's my, I mean, that's my only thing is, to me, that's residential neighborhood.
Sure.
Same with Polar Ridge. Guess it's an excellent supplement to your retirement program, but but I don't know if they would appreciate that either.
Sure.
So just, again, just gaining, just for clarity purposes.
And one other thing, when we get to the next item, which is sort of the minimum distances around specific types of properties, you start, if you restrict it to specific zones and then start placing some of those bubbles, which is part of the maps that you have in your packet this evening, it further restricts it and defines where these businesses can operate to. So it continues to shrink as you add more layers onto it, which could be challengeable if you make it too restrictive.
Yeah, that was the only little pocket that I had concerns or questions on. The community center falls in a MU3 zone.
Yes, it does.
There you go.
Any other questions on the zoning aspect? Or I can continue to move through some of these items, and we can circle back to it. On the topic of minimum distances from schools and parks, the Cannabis Act allows cities to prohibit cannabis operations within 1,000 feet or fewer of schools and 500 feet or less from any daycare, residential treatment, or attraction within a public park that is regularly used by minors, which is really interesting because, as Jack noted in his memorandum, we're not looking at just specifically park properties. It is, and Jack, maybe you can elaborate a little bit, but it's, you know, things like ballparks, playground equipment, water features, if there are any of those types of items. And it's going to be a little bit difficult to try to draw some of those boundaries, but it's possible. So our recommendation, and I understand maybe there was some discussion about this some time ago at the council, but would be to impose 750-foot minimum distance from schools and then the 500 feet from all of those other uses, daycares, residential treatment facilities, and the park attractions, et cetera. So again, this is where I mentioned earlier that if you look at the zoning map and then all of a sudden you start placing these bubbles, you're further restricting where these businesses can operate.
Do residential treatment centers need a special license from the city?
I believe they, from the city? That's a good question. I guess I don't know.
I don't believe so.
I don't think so. I think that's all licensed by the state.
City, then, so we know to go around them?
Yeah. We know where they are, which is one of the maps here. Where at the top, it says 500 park amenities and daycare group homes, et cetera. That's.
See all the circles are.
That's all the, yeah.
As far as the distance away, is that from the state, or is that what we chose?
Well, the Cannabis Act allows for 1,000 feet or fewer from schools. We're recommending 750. And then the Act allows for 500 or fewer from those other uses, and we're recommending staying at the 500.
Okay. That's what I thought. I thought there's this mandate, but we can shrink a little bit.
We could shrink if we wanted to.
Or go the full width.
Yeah, you can go, it's a cap from the state. You're not required to have any buffer from these specified uses. It's a power to the city to enact this if you want to. But without, so without city action on this, there would be no buffers. And then the city has the option to impose up to those distances.
All right.
Moving on to hours of operation, state law allows for cannabis operations to operate between 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. And businesses cannot operate between 2:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., or 10:00 a.m. starting on Sundays. We may pass ordinances restricting operations during hours not specifically listed, so that would be between 9:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m., and then 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. A lot of cities, we know, do mirror liquor store operations. And after some discussion among staff and then conferring with Jack in the city attorney's office, we are recommending to allow operations Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. That fits within what the Cannabis Act allows, but also tries to mirror what our liquor store operations in the city can do, again, within those defined time in the Cannabis Act.
Are those, the times can be approved now and amended later? Or once they're established, they're established?
I think you can, it would just be a simple change to your ordinance. So you can impose them now and then change them at any time, as long as they're not in conflict with what the Cannabis Act requires. In terms of the number of registrations, cities have the ability to cap at one per 12,500 residents. There's no rounding down, so if you have 12,501 residents in your town, you have to allow two. Again, that's if you want to place a cap on it. The state demographic data shows that North St. Paul has 13,015 residents at the last check. So if you want to cap the number of registrations, it would be at two. Otherwise, you could have no cap, and you could have as, you know, as many of it fits within the criteria you set forth in the ordinance.
And you could set a cap at more than two, but still some number that you pick. You just can't go less than two.
Yeah.
And it gets a little confusing as well. So there are six types of, so there's a whole bunch of different license types, everything from cultivation, manufacturing, wholesaling, all the way through to retail. There are six types of business that have to register with the city before they can operate. And that is, generally speaking, everything that makes retail sales to customers. And then there are three types of business that we can limit the number of, which is the adult-use retail, so sort of the dispensaries. And then microbusiness and metso-business are kind of a brewery-type of model where it's production through to retail. Medical cannabis is the other businesses that have to register, but we aren't able to limit the number of. And the lower potency hemp edibles as well, which is, I'm not a huge fan of how they've done this, but that's the new name for edible cannabinoid products, which are the THC seltzers that are currently available today. So anyone who's selling those THC products, whenever OCM gets their act together, will have to be licensed through the state, and will have to register with the city. But we do not have authority to cap the number of those licenses. So the cap is just for cannabis dispensaries.
So stupid question, maybe. I don't know. I'm running this through my head.
No such thing. It's all very complicated.
Yes, to say the least. Our smoke shops here in North St. Paul, they choose to sell. Would that be considered part of our, if we decide, oh, we're going to only have two people, or, excuse me, two businesses, would that be, speak to that, please.
Yes, so that would depend on what kind of license they sought from the state. Most likely not if they continue to sell tobacco products and the lower potency hemp products, basically seltzers and gummies, which is what they're currently selling. If they wanted to become a full-bore dispensary and sell the high potency, full-strength cannabis, then they would have to get a cannabis retailer license. That would count towards the cap of no more than two at that point.
Okay, so they could sell the lower dosage.
Yes.
And not be considered a dispenser.
One of these two, yeah. We're talking specifically.
And I'm just throwing out a number as in two, or just whatever.
Whatever, if there's a cap imposed.
Yeah, I mean, we have a couple of those places here in North St. Paul.
And also, if a smoke shop were to get a cannabis retail license, they would then have to stop selling tobacco products because the products that can be sold from these sort of full-strength dispensary businesses are extremely limited. It's basically, it's cannabis. They can also sell the lower potency hemp, but it's THC products, memorabilia, and bags for your products, basically. And that's all they can sell. So they cannot sell, you know, no alcohol, no tobacco. I think they can sell, like, pre-bagged snacks, like a bag of chips or something, but they could not, you know.
Why not catch them there?
Why not? But won't be able to, for example, serve, like, hot food.
Okay. Thank you.
And for reference, we've capped the licenses on smoke shops in the city of North St. Paul, and I believe at four or five, whatever our existing number is.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity.
And then finally, there are a couple other considerations that the city should consider. I outlined them in the packet, those being adopting some more specific definitions for enclosed, locked, and public view for zoning controls in residential districts as it relates to home grow requirements. The second one is adopting a minimum distance of 500 feet between two cannabis operations within the city. So if you got one in one location, then a second one, if you capped it, would have to be more than 500 feet away. You can't have two side by side. And then the third, prohibiting outdoor seating and smoking areas in those cannabis businesses as well. So, you know, think of it as sort of like a back patio at a bar. You can't purchase cannabis at a dispensary, go into their back patio, and consume it. So those are our recommendations for you this evening. Looking for hopefully clear direction on all of those points so that I can work with Jack and develop the draft ordinance.
I have a question about the hours. Did the chief weigh in on those hours, and did he agree with?
He did, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, we, Ryan and I met with members of the police department, including the chief, on all these recommendations.
Riley, as that narrative that you just went over, can we just break it down specifically by question and then just ask for the feedback?
Yes, absolutely. So we'll go back to the zoning question.
Thank you.
So our recommendation is to allow for cannabis businesses in the MU2 and MU3 zone and not in the MU1 zone, noting that the MU1 zone is what we consider kind of our historic downtown core. So I'll start right there.
3 has the mall over by.
Riley, I'm sorry. Can I, is there a chance you can put it up on the screen?
I can.
Only because we're with our laptops.
I'm not a team player.
Don't mean to interrupt. It's just easier to see it.
That's fine. I agree. I'm looking at the yellow. This colorblind mayor thing is kind of difficult here. I can see the yellow there, but the rest of these things are all look-alike.
This particular map is showing the 750-foot buffer around schools. But you'll note, if you can kind of zoom into kind of the downtown core, I guess, that darker red is the MU2 and MU3. That kind of like lighter pink is the MU1.
Just so we're, so what colors are you saying we allow it for?
We would allow it for everything that's in the dark shade of pink. So we would allow it for everything that's in the dark shade of pink, and then the, you, you can see at the bottom if you want to scroll, that's, that is, that's the legend, showing the different zoning districts. So all of the kind of yellow, beige, brown colors, those are all residential zoning districts. All of the pink and reddish colors, those are the commercial districts, and the MU1 zone is traditionally thought of as our historic downtown. Basically starts at, what is that, First, and continues all the way to Division Street, to Century.
And a little bit up-
And a little bit up, a little bit up Margaret, too.
To the bridge.
Up to the bridge, correct. So it would not be allowed basically on Main Street from First to Century-
Yep.
And then from, on Margaret, from Main Street to the bridge over 36, but all other commercial spaces then in the, in the city would be allowed, provided that, of course, if you, when you impose the buffer zone, you know, you restrict it from those areas.
Yep.
Well, if you had to-
Pass it.
Cut it down even further, I mean, I would assume you have to go by zones-
Yeah.
As opposed to slicing out parts of zones.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, yeah.
Otherwise, you're discriminating.
Yeah.
Or whatever. This is crazy.
You guys okay with that?
So what are we going to do about this section, the housing that runs along Seventh? Because it's still in MU3.
And it would-
I mean, otherwise, I'm comfortable with the way it's broken out, and thank you for taking the time, energy, and effort to figure all that out. That's the only piece, just because it's residential neighborhood, in my opinion, it's defined as residential.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I don't know the history of that property, when that project was built, and I assume it was in that zone and, and the city never rezoned it into a-
It's the old anchor block, yeah.
You know, like an MU, or a, R3 zone, or something like the high-density.
And we do have quite a bit of residential in our downtown now, too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we've got 84 plus 90, whatever it's going to be.
Yeah, and those buildings are protected. It's basically Polar Ridge to McKnight on Seventh on the south side that is mixed-
Could be have something happen.
MU3.
So, that's good.
They have homeowners' associations there, too, that could restrict any kind of commercial in there, I would imagine, as well.
Yeah, they, they are the property owners, so they could effectively decline if they wanted to.
Right. I think you made the best, the best out of a bad situation.
Okay.
On all you can say.
On the topic of requiring a conditional use permit, yay or nay?
Say it again.
Requiring a CUP?
That's where you, you guys got different opinions here, Jack and you.
I mean, I see-
I'll just, let me say this, I'm not, I'm not like advocating hard for it, but it, it just, just because there's so much unknown, that, that was kind of our thought.
I can see it initially. I don't necessarily think that it would be worth, with Jack, administrative, it sounds like an administrative nightmare, however, to be sure that we're compliant and we're following proper protocol, especially with us all being brand-new as of next year, I can't see why we can't do it for a short period of time.
And, and my assumption is initially, if we, if we get a request for a business to move in, I mean, I'm going to be reaching out to, to Jack to make sure that, you know, the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted on something like this, too.
That's, that's what we, you know, you guys do well together, so we assume that, yeah.
I, I'm in favor of having it, but I also like a detailed memo that can go to the planning commission on what we can, or what they can ask and what they can't ask for a CUP around this business, to make sure they're staying within whatever guardrails the state puts up for this business as well.
Understood. We, we can provide that for the council, or for the planning commission packet.
Perfect. And, and for me, I'm of, I'm of the mindset of, you know, crowd before you walk, walk before you run. So, so a few, a few guardrails, to me, aren't the worst things in the world, they can always be removed, or reduced, or-
Yep.
Yep. We, we're at the two, right? We, we got that, that's coming next.
That's another question. I'll, I'll jump to that one, since you brought it up. You want to cap it at two, or allow for as many as can fit?
I, I'd like to cap it at two.
Same here.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Now, when the city opens up one, it doesn't count towards the two, does it?
It was, does not count towards the two. That was sort of a, sort of a trade-off. It used to be that the city was just one among the pool of applicants. Now, they've changed it so that we are guaranteed a license if we apply for one, but it doesn't count towards the cap.
Perfect. On the question of the minimum distance, schools and, and I call them parks, but park amenities, we recommend the 750 from schools and the 500 from, I'm calling it everything else. Is that-
Why did you go from 1,000 down to 750?
In actuality, when we brought it up before, last time we were out to council, it was 750 was discussed at that point, by council.
We didn't talk about it.
And that was kind of a, somewhere at 1,000, somewhere at 500, and I think we just, at that point in time, said, let's call it 750, and we know we'll resurrect the conversation again at a later time, so.
You still good with that, later time here?
I feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll be honest with you, though, I don't feel comfortable at the two if the city can still have one. I feel like that's an awful lot at that point. I'd like to reconsider that, if we're looking at, if the city is exercising that piece, and when we, if we do, it's been thrown out there as a revenue resource, I don't think we should have any more than one if the city's going to do that.
They won't allow us.
That's not an option.
We can't restrict-
It has to be two.
That's that population, plus-
We're about 500 residents over.
Plus a kicker, unfortunately.
Just barely over the threshold, but we are over the threshold.
Whose idea was it for the apartments? Just kidding.
Are you going to call Article Seven?
Anyway, that's what I think, I'm going to have a whole lot of hate mail.
On the hours of operation, again, is that, we, we're pretty, pretty restricted there on what we can restrict on our own, so this was kind of the best we could do-
Okay.
In terms of what we proposed. Sound good?
Yep, the best we can do.
And then you walk before you run, run, it's, to close it at eight o'clock, I'm fine with, to begin, you can always extend the hours, but that's just my, of my opinion.
I agree. Liquor stores used to be eight o'clock, nine o'clock?
Depends on what city.
Furlongs used to be open later, I remember that.
They're in Oakdale.
And then finally, the last set of recommendations, again, was more specific definitions as related to homegrown requirements, adopting a minimum distance of 500 feet between two cannabis operations, and then prohibiting outdoor seating and smoking areas. Are you okay with those?
Yeah, if I could just, mayor and council members, just with those definitions, just to kind of provide the context on that, so, the statute allows individuals to grow their own plants at home. The requirement in the statute is that all of that, home growth, has to be in a locked, enclosed space that is out of public view. None of those words are defined within the statute, and so the, the thought is to kind of get out ahead and to-
Define it ourselves.
Define them a little more clearly, so that we have an enforceable ordinance if there are problems down the line.
So no grown in the bay window where the light comes in?
I mean, depending on how you define public view, but probably not.
All right. I'm comfortable with that. Talk about going all in, you can grow it, you can sell it, you can-
I don't know that I'm in favor of having the 500-foot distance between the two. To me, there might be value of having them next to each other. I, I, I don't know, to me, that just seems capricious to make them be 500 feet apart.
I thought we had to, if we-
No.
No, you don't have to, it's just a consideration, and, and truthfully, when you, when you look, when you think of commercial spaces and properties, 500 feet really isn't all that much. I mean, it really isn't, when you think about it.
Next suite down, usually.
Yeah, a couple, or a couple suites down. I, I'm, I mean, I think from a staff level, I don't think we're married to one or, one or the other, it's, I think it's up to the council.
What's your, what next, expound on yours? Please.
If, if someone finds a good location for it and wants to drive competition, I mean, it's like putting up one bar next to another bar that's successful. It, it's not a bad business strategy. I, I just, I, I don't see it as an ordinance that helps the city in any way, shape, or form.
We get two, so that means that there are two, that's it.
Right.
Right next to each other, and we're done.
True.
I'm indifferent.
I have no, I'm, yeah, I'm indifferent. I mean, when you're comparing bars, how many do we have downtown, so it's-
But I would bet they're 500 feet apart.
Between New-
I'm saying-
You don't think that's 500 feet?
No. Field trip.
Let's do it. First round.
I, I would also note, a potential setback between businesses could also be made to apply to more than just the capped businesses, because there are, again, there are certain businesses that we can cap the number on, and then the rest of the license types, the more industrial and the medical cannabis side, we cannot cap, but could still impose a setback, you know, between those business types. Again, whether you want to or not is a, a policy decision that I leave to your discretion, but that is an option.
And for the lighter stuff, it's, people can already sell that, like with, you said, in liquor stores and different things like that, and even the, okay.
You know, and I, to me, I look at the shopping center to the north of Target. You know, if that had some vacancies and two shops wanted to go in there, I, I don't see that as us, you know, saying, no, only one can go in there is worthwhile.
Scratch that?
Yeah. He's got a good point, and like I said, if it's, if it comes, then they're right next to each other, it's easier to-
Sounds good.
For everybody.
I believe, unless, Jack, you have anything else, that's sort of all of the considerations we need this evening. Just for your own information, council, we, I did reach out to our neighboring cities and, and requested just a kind of idea, of course, they haven't gone through and approved all of these things, but just to give you some sort of an idea of what they're doing, so you can put that in your considerations this evening, that's in your packet.
Let me answer everything for you?
Oh, yes, I'm good.
All right.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Appreciate you.
Move on to the next discussion.
Yep.
And that is a discussion of revenue options for the city. I'm turning it over to Dan, our finance director.
Mayor, council members, as we were talking about the budget, there's two sides of the budget, the expenditure side and revenue side, and we've extensively gone through our expenditure side and concluding last week with the capital improvement plan where you had made some suggestions, and you'll be seeing those, what the impact of some of those changes in pushing things out to 2026. We'll see that next week in, in a discussion where we try to finalize where we want to be for the tax levy after the Truth and Taxation hearing. But for revenue options, this, this isn't all exhaustive, it's just a number of items that have kind of been thrown out by staff, and some that city council has mentioned in the past. There are attachments that I could find from the League of Minnesota Cities that are in the back part of this document. Not saying that staff is for or against any of these items, they're just more or less for you to look at and give us some direction, if you want us to start gathering some more information on these, if they are something that's appealing to city council. The items that we've included are central business district, sidewalks, snow removal fee, there's a sales tax, municipal liquor store, special assessments, municipal cannabis store, and then some other fees. And so I'm going to try to go quickly through this, so hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to look at this and some of the backup documentation. The city did have a sidewalk snow removal fee for the downtown business district. From the financial records, it looked like it started in 1998 to 99 and ended in 2018 to 2019, snow season. From what you can see, the last methodology in which businesses were charged was that we have a vendor that provides the snow removal in the downtown area, and then we added 50% to that, and then that was distributed based upon their frontage, footage for the properties, and there were some properties that were given just a flat fee. What had appeared from the documentation that I could come up with from our vendor perspective in a calendar year, the highest we had paid was in 2023, we paid $37,000. The lowest we paid in 2015 for the past 10 years was about 7,500, the average is about 17.7, and then you can see where the, the revenues were in those 10 years. So based upon the average, if you, basically charge it 150%, there's a potential revenue of about $26,500 if you were to start to look at that snow removal fee. And what had appeared from, from documentation is that it was charged after the snow season, where we had the actual, actual costs, and then it was allocated to the businesses. Businesses, obviously, if they didn't pay for it, then it was something that could be put on to their property taxes through the delinquent utility process, which you're all aware of, that we certify that, you know, in September, have a public hearing and so forth. We usually do it with our utilities, this is applicable to that, we could, that's how, that's how non-payment of those fees would end up going out onto the property taxes. So there's that item. I'm going to kind of quickly go through them and then go back and, and try to get some, you know, take from the city council on what you're looking, what you would like or disagree or, or don't want to pursue, or you do want to pursue. There's a sales tax, again, during the 2023 legislative session, the state imposed a motorium, new local option sales taxes. At this point, they will not consider requests during the 2024 and 2025 legislative sessions. A task force, well, actually was convened in July of 2023 and will issue recommendations in early 2024 of how to treat future requests. Full recommendations haven't been made at this point in time. I did attach a, a senate proposal that they have. It, it really appears that they're looking at more regional significant capital projects. So there, there's more to come on this as far as the steps that would need to be taken or for eligibility. The statutory process does talk about the steps of adopting a resolution, submitting a resolution, and supporting material to state sales tax committees and so forth, and then the notification requirements. The senate taxes committee was seeking input on the local property taxes, they're looking at a bill that would limit the authority to regional projects such as community centers, athletic complexes, convention centers, parks and trails located outside the metro that meet specific requirements, certain criminal justice facilities, and then also a maximum rate of half a percent sales tax would be the max. There is the option, and, and many jurisdictions have utilized it through, through the University of Minnesota Extension Services, they will provide a sales tax analysis. I do not know if there's a cost or not associated with that. I know that the city of Oakdale utilized them, and there's a report that's out there for them. I just went out and grabbed some sales tax information that's out there through the Department of Revenue, and just kind of showing you, the most current that they had out there was 2022, and then I looked up the past nine years, so I had to give a full 10 years, and just showing if, if, if all was eligible of their taxable sales at that half a percent, what you would have for potential income onto that. Again, an analysis would, would tell you what would be included and wouldn't, wouldn't be included, and they would give you kind of a better, true estimate of what you could really anticipate from a revenue source if you were to do a, a sales tax. But again, the sales tax would have to be utilized for an acceptable purpose, and once that purpose is done, the sales taxes is also sunset, and if you collected more, it's returned back, so, but it can't be used for other purposes. Another idea or thought that- Another idea or thought that was out there that we've kind of discussed, this one, I kind of talked about a municipal liquor store. Right now, the statute says that you have to have, your Minnesota city with a population of 10,000 or less, it would require a legislative change. If you were to, if legislation were to take action and change that population threshold from 10,000 to 15,000, it would impact approximately 34 cities. I think you do have some precedents being set that you would have a good chance to get that changed. The reason why I say that is because of just what you've just heard about the cannabis bill. Cannabis bill didn't limit municipality-run cannabis stores. Matter of fact, if you apply, you get a license. So maybe there's some appetite there at the legislative level to be able to change that type of piece to it. I also, in one of the attachments back there, I think it's from 20, it's a 2023 report, I think it shows the financials as of the year end of December 31st, 2021, for all of the state municipal liquor stores. And so it has some very good information to see how they perform. And so that can kind of give you an idea. Obviously, if you were to look at this option and/or a cannabis-run, a municipal cannabis-run store, you would end up having to develop a business plan and really look at a lot of other detail before you would ever go into, you know, pursuing that, because there would have to be, you know, the financial considerations as far as your capital, one time, your operational costs, and everything else. But some of the results of the municipal liquor store that were in there, and I'll just read this one piece to it here on the very line, during 2022 municipal, Minnesota municipal liquor stores had net transfers, transfers out minus transfers, ended up $22.9 million. So you can obviously see that, you know, running a municipal liquor store did benefit cities, you know, in various cities to lesser, to more and lesser degrees, but you can see that it is utilized to help offset the tax impact that they have on residents. But there's a full report that's in the documentation that I have provided. The other item that has been talked about on a few occasions, special assessments. Statute is pretty specific on the whole process of running special assessments and what you would do. Right now, the city, I believe, is at the end of 2019, passed a resolution to do away with special assessments, so that's what we've been doing at this point in time. It would take a resolution to bring that back into play. You know, so, you know, what do special assessments pay for really is more of our street type of projects. So our infrastructural components as far as streets, water, wastewater, surface water. It's key to remember that a special assessment, and this is really where the legal challenge comes out, is that it needs to meet the special benefit test, and that is where the, that the land needs to be receiving the special benefit from the improvement, and that the assessment does not exceed the special benefit measured by the increase in market value due to the improvement. And the assessment is uniform, is applied to the same class of property in the assessed area, and that would be a part of your policy that you would end up having to adopt. So that's where the, from looking at some of the case law and the legal challenges, and that's really where it comes down to, is saying that, let's say you come up with a special assessment, you say it's, you know, you've calculated it out, you're treating that class of property equally, and it's $10,000. But yet, I'm a property owner, and I can prove that the value of my property has only gone up $3,000. You know, they have the right to appeal that to the courts, which is going to cost the city in litigation fees and so forth to defend that special assessment component to it. That's where you, you know, I think spoke earlier, that's where, you know, I pointed out a couple of cities that are actually moving away from special assessments, just because of the pure cost impact that street work is costing nowadays. And if you're looking at trying to achieve a 30% to 40% of the costs coming through special assessments, the overall cost impact to the resident is so high that it's getting harder and harder to prove that benefit that has gone to that property. So that's something for you to be aware of, you know, in looking at the special assessment. It was asked, so I did just kind of some rough estimates of running it at, if we were to be shooting for a 10, 20, 30, 40% of the cost. So the projects that are currently in our CIP from 2025 to 2034, we have three years of '25, '27, and '29 with major reconstruction projects, and then the rest is under the pavement rehabilitation program. These all have an impact on four of our funds, the street fund, which is more funded through the general fund, through debt, and then there's water, wastewater, and surface water. So as you can see, total, all 10 years, if you were to do a 10% of the cost, it would be, you know, it could generate or save the city having to raise revenue in other sort, in other manners, and primarily through the property tax, $3.6 million, and then you can see 20%, that's 7.2, and so forth. The impact that it would have on the four separate funds, so I broke it down there underneath the same four scenarios, for streets, water, wastewater, and surface water, so you can see that. So at the end of the day, if none of this was challenged, and you were to take, let's say, the 10%, over the 10 years, you're saving $2 million on what is paid through by general fund levy dollars versus the other components of water, 305, which is paid through the rate, and same thing with wastewater and surface water, those are all paid through the rate. And as you can see, as you can remember, when we looked at the enterprise funds, pretty much across the board, we have rate increases to one level or another that are going to be needed over the next 10 years, especially with all of the infrastructural needs that the city has. And then, we heard a lot about the municipal cannabis stores, and I think the biggest thing that we heard is it's a work in progress. They're defining the rules, and so we don't know all of the nuances at this point in time. But throwing it out there as, definitely is, is an opportunity for the city to generate some revenue. Some other fees that kind of, just kind of quickly, there's been some discussion about, is that maybe there's, you know, we've had more apartments and rental units coming into the city that, if, you know, we have approximately, and this data is coming from our utility billing section, that we have approximately 1,300 rental units in the city of North St. Paul, and that if you were to charge each one $5 per month per unit, you know, that would be able to generate $78,000. Part of some of the questions that you would need to ask related to this is how does the city justify a rental unit fee? Do rental units require more city services? That's really kind of your, if you can answer yes to those pieces of, that they require more city services, then the fee would probably be more of a justifiable fee that you would be charging to the rental unit. Staff is gathering some information on a proposal to change, charge businesses a fee to conduct their fire certificate of compliance inspection, and they're gathering some information from other jurisdictions for some comparability for, that'll be brought back at a later date. There are also, there's a number of areas in the city where we get a number of repeat nuisance calls, and the city could then definitely pass an ordinance where they set up a fee for the ordinance. Again, those two probably would bring in very little, you know, in comparison. But again, those are some ideas that are thrown out there, and there's attachments that are available. I'm going to go back through, and I'm done talking, and I'm going to see where city council is as far as, do you want staff to kind of pursue any or none of these options? And then also, you may have some other options that you want us to look at and bring additional data back to you at a later date. So kind of looking at that central business, sidewalk snow removal fee. Thoughts? I see, I see a nod over here by Councilmember Cole.
Yeah, it's a, it's a fee that used to be shared with the business owners.
Yes.
And why it went away, I'm not sure. But it's not a ton of money, but as, I guess I'll just jump on my soapbox real quick and I'll get off of it. You know, in 2018, the city of North St. Paul was a mid-tier tax community in the county of Ramsey. We are now one of, if not the top, in the top two. A lot of that has been driven by the way that we've managed special assessments, the way that we've walked away from some of our fees. We've shifted that burden 100% on to the residents. Three and a half points of our levy now is roads. So, again, that was, a big chunk of that was covered off of assessments. I just think it's unfortunate that the council members-elect aren't here. I hope you go through this with them when they come on board, but it's unfortunate, but I think it's time the city take a long, hard look at, at some of, some of the things that the city has been paying for, for several years, that may need to be reversed. And I, when I remember looking through the cost of snow removal, it wasn't horrible. But the city has to rent a big giant tractor thing to haul it away and find a place to store it and everything else, and I don't know if that burden needs to rest on all the residents.
Other council members, thoughts, comments?
The snow removal, where does it start? Does it start down at? Why don't you come up? I got a couple of questions for you.
Hello.
Hello.
I usually don't make it out of here unscathed.
Nope.
I keep saying, bring Randy.
That's right. So it starts basically from First, First Street and Seventh to basically Charles and Seventh.
Where the history, or the Boy Scout, is that where it is?
Not down that far.
Okay.
Well, I take that back. I mean, that gets, sidewalk gets plowed, we take care of that sidewalk, but we don't haul any snow or anything out of there, that just gets plowed.
Okay.
Do you take care of that sidewalk down to the Boy Scouts or?
All the way down history.
All the way down history.
Yes, that gets, that gets.
Right, Randy?
Yep. Just trying to double check. Yes.
So that's part of, even though we're not home, but we're taking city's resources to.
Yep, all the snow from First to Charles, pretty much all that snow ends up getting hauled out, because we don't leave any banks to walk over, everything gets plowed off sidewalks, pushed out, and either pushed in a pile or hauled, depending on how much snow. Eventually, that snow gets hauled out.
Question?
My initial thought on it is I'm not in favor, because we have a hard enough time attracting businesses to the downtown area. However, if it was just me up here giving staff direction, my direction would be, put it before the EDA, and I would want a recommendation from the EDA on what way they want us to go, before I would want to make a move on this. Is this going to help attract businesses, or how much is it going to hurt attracting businesses, or is it going to be a nonstarter? So, like, say, if it was just me, I would put it before the EDA to have a good thorough recommendation from them on which way they would want us to go.
And everybody's in, so when it comes to, you know, that if they don't pay, it goes on their assessment, it goes on to their taxes, is that what I just heard? Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's not like I can take care of my little five feet in front of the place? That's not an option.
My, my thought on that would, it would have to be all or nothing. I don't know, I don't know how it would make any sense if, you know, one business.
It doesn't, that's why.
20 feet, and the next one had 50, and we started and we stopped, because they'd have to do something with their snow either way, so.
So it's almost like we have an association for the business community, almost, is what we're thinking, that's what it would be.
Yeah, business district, yep.
So to me, you know, because right now you mow down in front of Reef, Reeflex, is it, or Flex?
Yep, we basically, we mow from First to Helen is what we mow down there, all the boulevards down there. That's all irrigated, mowed, and we take care of landscaping.
So it's almost an association for downtown, is what we're talking about. We're not that much as plowing too, it's an association type of thing, but some don't, a lot of them don't have lawn in front of it, of course, because it's not there.
We've only charged for the snow removal in the past.
Correct. And then we're doing the sidewalk all the way down to the, the historical society.
Yeah, down to Henry.
I'm not against it, but I also like Jason's idea.
Yes, both sides.
So we're pretty much, even though we're not hauling away, we're taking care of snow for the, we don't go down as far as the bank, then, National, they don't do it.
The bank does their own.
Okay, and the Legion does their own, too? Okay.
I'm not against, again, I'm not against it, but I like Jason's idea of bringing it in front of the EDA.
Just understand what all is entail with it, because it's mandatory, just like an association, when you sign up, you read the bylaws and you sign up, do we have a mandatory thing? Can you do that, just put snow removal on somebody's taxes?
I would view it as a CAM charge, a common area maintenance charge for the downtown business, and I believe that is legal, because I know other cities have it, especially if you word it as a CAM charge.
Yeah, and we have some specific authority in the statutes for snow and ice removal as well.
As well to make sure it's fair as far as what they're, what they're getting, and it's understandable where, you know, what benefit they're getting out of it, if they have to have it, and that's why there's associations and rules and bylaws and things like that, so they know exactly, if you buy a building there, do you know that you're going to be, you know, included in that?
But as residents of North St. Paul, is it fair that we're paying for their snow removal to be hauled out of downtown into another location?
No, I, that's, just are we clear about that as far as like an association? Is where I was, you know, understanding that that's part of the rules when they, when they have that. Some people probably have bought since then, don't have no idea they're going to be charged. I would imagine there's been turnover for the buildings.
Yeah, I never was part of a discussion for, for when it started or when it ended, so I have no idea what, what the, you know, the, what was behind that. I, I don't know.
And right now, we're just charging for the hallway downtown, we're not charging for the sidewalks.
No, we get a bill. And that, and bills doubled in the last couple of years.
Yep.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
The contract cost that we have, the contractor that we, we put it out for bid. Yep. The price doubled, probably what, two, three years ago?
Probably two or three years ago, we actually had put it out, put the contract out there for bid, and at that time, basically why you see the cost double is that the fee that we were getting charged was way under what going rate was. It was probably half of what going rate was out there. So when we got a bid for doing downtown, it's per hour, so for a machine and operator, and that's where you see that, that big jump in cost. Plus, that was the year that it snowed. Normally, we have 14 snow events, 14 on average, 14, 15, I think that year we went out 28 times, and that is even more down there, because that gets pre-done before we do the initial plow down there. Like, if we, that person comes in, does it before the bars let out, they might just clear a quick path, so they're down there multiple times to work down there, so.
I guess what I was getting to is the people get their sidewalk plowed all the way down, but they're not being charged, it's just the people in the, the business. It's not for the houses that are on, on, or that, does a library get charged? For, I mean, not the library, I'm sorry, the old.
Boy Scout Museum.
Boy Scout Museum. That's why I'm asking, who's, who's involved in paying for this? Does it, do people pay all the way down to the?
I don't know, I don't know that, again, that before I started, had anything to do with this, I'm not trying to shrug responsibilities here.
I get it, but I think we just need to find out.
I think this is, this is a topic that needs to be revisited. We have other options to discuss.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, that there seems to be interest on this, but more information needs to be gathered, and that this probably. needs to be gathered, and that this probably is a very good idea that it would start at the EDA with some of the information. So basically, we can grab some information, give estimates of what different properties would end up paying based upon some sort of assumptions, so that-
As it goes longer than we're talking about, that's what's confusing me.
Yep, so we can, we can definitely do that and take a look at that. The sales tax.
I'd like to explore that.
You'd like to explore the sales tax.
I think we should all speak up on what we want to explore.
I'm for exploring it, but I think we pause it until the state legislature comes back with their recommendations or restrictions for what the new one is going to be. I think it's too early for us to-
Yep, and I, just trying to get moving this, moving this along a little bit. I agree with that, but would it be allowable that we kind of reach out to the University of Minnesota Extension and see if, what it would cost for them to do kind of an analysis just so we have a better idea of potentially what we would end up generating for that? You know, thought, just the thought out there, so we have more of a, I like, no, I mean, if there's a huge cost associated with it, but probably would, then I would definitely postpone that.
Bringing the cost before the council, I think, is no harm in the foul.
And we understand what we're getting into.
The municipal liquor store?
Go for it. Take a look at it.
I think sending a letter to all the cities to see if they're interested in forming a coalition, all the ones between 10 and 15, would be a great place to start.
Okay, special assessments?
I'm in favor of continuing to explore it. 10% might be steep. Even at, even at 5%, it's more, it's 5% more than we had. I think year 2026 was $375,000 of generated income at 10%.
Right.
Even, even half of that is 2% of a levy.
I'm in favor of it.
I'm personally very against.
We've gone away from, I'm a little concerned about it, but I'm, I'm not really for it either.
We definitely can, can give you information on the, what the 5%. I mean, you think you just did the math quicker than anybody else can. What are the, and again, all of these items, I think, will bring back kind of a, not as much, but have more of a discussion onto it, but special assessments. One of the key things that we have to remember is we can't go on and off, and on and off, and on and off, because that creates an inequity for property owners across the city.
There has been.
And so I'll just kind of preface it and leave it at that, but we'll kind of come back with some more information on that. So so far, four at least interested in pursuing and looking at a little bit. Again, it's no decision to move forward or against. Municipal cannabis store?
I'm for it.
Yes.
Yes.
And then we had a couple of other fees. There was the rental unit fee.
Yep.
Thoughts?
I'm, right now, I'm looking at focusing on the larger ones, I guess, that's-
That's a levy point, though. At five bucks a month, that's a full, that's a full levy point. That's, that's what I looked at.
And that is a correct statement, yeah.
Rental units, is that homes, apartments, everything?
Yep.
Yep.
I was for the rental, but for the two lower ones, I was against, because the amount of staff work, I don't think they'll refund your money.
And again, they really would result in very little. So what I'm hearing is no to charging businesses for fire certificate of compliance inspection and nuisance service calls, but to look at the rental unit charge fee.
I'm still on board with the fire certificates. We used to charge for that as well, and we went away from that, so again, I think we need to be consistent and-
I think that one stopped due to the pandemic.
Yep.
Yep.
So again, I would, I would take-
So gather more information on that and kind of show you, show it back? Okay.
I'll go with what the council has. I have a rental here in North St. Paul, so I'm just going to let that one be, whatever they decide.
And so the only one we're eliminating from this group is nuisance call. Okay? And then are there any other thoughts or anything that you want staff to pursue?
I had one other on my list. It has to do with stormwater utility funds, and it has to do with a fee based upon the square footage of your parking lots, because I think one of the only utilities that we increased was stormwater, wasn't it?
I think there is some-
That is, that is how we're doing it today, and Morgan can speak to them, or but there is, WSB has, has a formula that's utilized in each one of those commercial properties. Yes.
I didn't, I didn't realize we were doing that. Okay, cool. That's good.
Yep.
I think that was the only one I had on my list that we didn't cover that wasn't up there.
Okay.
Can I ask for some, not direction, may I ask you guys to look into what have we done, taken away, done again, taken away? Because as we're going through consistencies, I mean, if we've done something, taken away, and we're going to do it again, then we should probably keep in mind for consistencies that we just continue doing this forward. I mean, it just looks really bad, yeah.
18 and now for all these streets that have been repaired.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep, we certainly will. All right. I thank you very much for your input onto that.
Thank you.
And we'll schedule additional meetings onto that. They won't happen this year. We're pretty much booked from a budgetary standpoint. We'll, again, next meeting during the regular city council, after we've had the TNT, we'll kind of finalize the levy, and then obviously the last meeting in December, we have to certify our levies for 2025. And then so we'll begin these next year, and you certainly can come back and sit in the audience and tell us what-
Sit down, I'll sit down with John. John, I'll buddy up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, nothing else? Let's call for adjournment.
Some of them.
Councilmember Swer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll give ourselves three, four minutes. How's that? Five minutes.